Good morning. Welcome to the July 12th Planning Commission meeting. Would you please stand and join me with the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Good morning. All right, Mr. Haugie? Mr. Herzog?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Okuchi?
Here.
Mr. Severson? Mr. Moss?
Here.
Mr. Nader?
Here.
Thank you, Kara. EJ.
Planning Services Division. So, we're at our halfway point. We've made it through half the year. If you're taking a more positive look at this, we're just three weeks into the summer. So, this is typically the time of year we assess where we're kind of at with planning applications and permits, just to see how we're tracking. Right now, planning applications are up about eighteen percent over last year at this time. Last year, we had about four hundred and fifty entitlement applications that we processed, and that's everything from simple approvals like a sign permit to a variance, all the way to tentative maps and subdivisions. And so, right now, this year, just through the first half of the year, we have about two hundred and seventy applications that have been filed with accounting. So, on a daily basis, planning staff is managing about seventeen EIRs, and there's probably another forty projects in environmental review that we're working on daily. The good news is, planning is fully staffed up. We have sixteen planners here in Auburn. We have five planners up in the Tahoe City office. I'd also like to say that we have a very strong team in engineering and surveying and environmental health and building, and they all participate in the review of these projects. So, we're busy, but we have staff, and they're very busy, too, but we're getting things done. Let's see, this year, later this year, September, the American Planning Association is having their chapter conference down in San Diego. We are budgeted to send two commissioners, if anybody is interested, down to San Diego for the -- yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, can I interrupt on that? My suggestion would be to the rest of the commission that we, if they're available, if our two newest members could go, because I think that would be a really good experience and learning experience for them, so that's a suggestion, if they're interested in that. Don't mean to put them on the spot, but...
I think you're on the spot.
The chairman put you on the spot.
But you can let EJ know, but...
Yeah, we can all circle back with you, but if there's interest in doing that, then we'll make those arrangements. I'm also trying to send a couple of my staff down to the same conference, and they have, you know, specific to planning commissioners, they have specific, you know, I don't know if I want to call them classes or presentations, just for planning commissioners. So, I would welcome you two, if you could do that, so I think that'd be good. Let's see, at our most recent board supervisors' meetings, there's been no shortage of exciting topics that have been being discussed, none of which have been directly related to land use, so I have nothing to report on the land use side, except that the board did have budget presentations a while back, and it looks like we'll be receiving funding for upgrades to the technology for the planning commission room here. You know, what that's going to do is allow us to operate, you know, more efficiently, smoothly, and the big thing is hopefully do video conferencing up with our Tahoe office in a much better fashion with new equipment. Right now, we can do that, it's kind of clunky, we have the screen that, when we open the doors, up in the back, you know, we have a, you know, we can bring the Tahoe office in, but I think once all these upgrades are done, you know, just make it more of an available process for those folks who are in the eastern part of the county.
Are you saying we'll have a different screen than the one that's in the back?
They're going to redo everything. Yeah, so there's a, yeah, they're changing things, I couldn't even tell you what they are, but it will be a significant upgrade and occur over the next year.
Okay, great.
So, looking ahead at our upcoming planning commission agenda or meetings, July 26th will be the next meeting, that's going to be here in Auburn, and we will be doing the interactive video feed to Tahoe, in the clunky sense I was talking about. The reason is, we have, we're bringing forward the zoning text amendment, that's bringing some proposed changes to our zoning ordinance. These are, for the most part, just cleanup changes to make things easier for both the public and county staff. These are changes that will address street-side setbacks, revisions to the nuisance abatement process, how we handle cellular facilities, solar, and other items like that. So, that will be at that July 26th meeting. We're also bringing forward an amendment to the Dry Creek West Placer Community Plan, which is also a cleanup to incorporate the Placer Vineyards Project and the Riola Vineyards Project into the land use diagram, which was never done years ago when it was, you know, when it was originally approved. And there's also an extension of time on that agenda as well. And then, the following meeting, August 9th, we believe that will be in Auburn as well. We hope to have an update on the Placer County Conservation Plan, which is nearing completion of the draft EIR, EIS, and that will be getting close to release for public review. There's an extension of time on that agenda, and there may be some other items as well. That's probably about as far out as I want to look right now, just to keep things on track, so if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, one question later, but I just want to let you know, I will not be in town on the 23rd, that's the next, August 23rd.
August 23rd, okay.
But I'd also like to ask a question on this, though, because we have correspondence here on this Twilight Ride property, it's, we get a lot of, we had a lot of memos on it.
Which, which property?
It's called Twilight Ride Property, I know it's fifty acres, it's a parking lot or something. My question is, that coming to us, will that be coming to us as a planning issue before?
So, we were just talking about that yesterday, I do not know if that's going to be coming to the planning commission, it's a, it's a, it's a project with our Parks Department with Facility Services. You know, depending on the environmental document, if there's an EIR involved, sometimes that will go through the planning commission, so between now and the next meeting, I'll get you an answer on that.
Okay, thank you.
There obviously will be hearings for it, but it may...
There will be, you know, some projects go directly to the board of supervisors, I'm just not sure if that will be one of them.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, EJ. Now, on to our consent agenda, and we need to do some modification on that. Two of our member, oh, excuse me, public comment, gee, I'm trying to avoid that, I guess. This is a time for anybody to talk about items that are not on our agenda, if you'd like to speak before the commission on them. I would ask that you hold your comments to three minutes, and as we go through the rest of our agenda, that will be the case, whenever there's a public opportunity for the public to make comment, will be at a three-minute interval, and we would ask that you prepare to make your comments very succinct. So, is there anybody who would like to address the commission on a non-agenda item? Okay, I'm not seeing it, all right, now we'll go on to the consent. Since we had two members that were absent, we're going to take, we're going to, for the last meeting, and one of our agenda, our consent items is to approve the minutes from the last meeting, we're going to take that as a separate action, and those two members that were not present will have to abstain from this.
Yeah, three members were present.
Oh, three.
But I can say that I did review the tape on it.
Okay, let's see, Clayton, how do we deal with that, if we only have, we have three, that's not a quorum, I guess, for that.
So, those three commissioners would need to abstain. You do have quorum, you would just, the consent item would not pass, and you don't have a majority vote of the quorum.
So, maybe we best put this off to the next meeting, when we have all of the people that were present at that meeting. Hopefully Larry will be back at that point, so...
Yes, that would probably be the best.
Maybe that's the best approach.
Do we need a motion to that effect?
Do we need a motion to move this item to our next meeting schedule, or do we just sort of let it, just address the one item we can?
I believe it can just be continued, and a motion is not needed.
Okay, all right, then we'll just continue that item. And the other one, I would say first, does any of the commissioners want to remove this item from consent or discussion later, or should we go ahead and deal with it as a consent item? Anybody want to pull this item? Also, the public has the opportunity for this item to be pulled and discussed, not seeing anybody standing up on that, so it's the pleasure of the commission on that.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve the second item on the consent agenda, the extension of time for the tentative subdivision map.
Second. Movement seconded, I'm sorry, Anders, or?
Anders.
Anders, okay.
Doesn't matter.
All right. The movement seconded, roll call.
All right, I have a first by Mr. Moss and a second by Mr. Haugie. Mr. Howzie, Haugie?
Yes.
Mr. Herzog?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Okuchi?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Okay, now we'll move on to, we're on our timed item, we're past the time, our first item, Riola Vineyard Specific Plan, Willow, Phase Two Willow Glen. And I guess we're, Nick is going to make the presentation.
Good morning, I'm Nick Trifaro, Senior Planner with the Planning Services Division. So, the item I have before you today is the Glen Willow Tentative Subdivision Map. This is Phase Two of the Riola Vineyard Specific Plan. So, I'll just start by giving you an overview of the specific plan itself. So, the specific plan area is located in the southwestern portion of Placer County, within the Dry Creek West Placer Community Plan Area, and it's just west of the city of Roseville. The property, the specific plan area covers a total of five hundred and twenty-five acres with ultimate development of nine hundred, excuse me, nine hundred and thirty-three units. Includes a residential community with open space, recreational, as well as agricultural and commercial components. It's divided up into three phases. Phase one, over on the east side, is Mariposa, that was approved by the planning commission back in 2010. That's actually currently under construction for a hundred and seven lots. Phase two, you see down the middle, is our current proposal, Glen Willow. And then, phase three, over on the west, is Silver Sage, which is a future development yet to be approved. So, the specific plan was approved back in 2009, along with the Development Standards, Design Guidelines, and Development Agreement, and then also the project EIR was certified at the same time. The board approved in 2015 amendment to the specific plan, disaddressed land use and zone, zoning modifications, as well as roadway changes. An addendum to the certified EIR was also approved at the same time. Also wanted to note that back in 2012, there was an addendum to the EIR to address allowing affordable housing to occur off-site through funding for an off-site transitional housing facility. And then, as you can see, there was three master plans approved for the project, Water Master Plan, Sewer and Drainage. So, what's being proposed today is a Glen Willow Tentative Map. As you can see, the map's divided into a hundred and eighty-seven lots. A hundred and sixty-six are low-density, eleven are state residential, and there's one agricultural lot. Also, there is a seven-acre lot that's not included as part of the subdivision, it's in the center of the property, that includes an existing rural residence. And then, there's some other onsite amenities, I'll go into in a minute. So, the plan area is zoned, the subdivision map area is zoned Riola Vineyard Specific Plan. Here's an aerial showing the entire specific plan area, as you can see, Dry Creek lies, forms the northern boundary, then further north is a Placer Vineyard Specific Plan area. A lot of avenues located to the west, and Lurka Road, as well as Dry Creek Community Park is further to the east. And then, to the south is PFE Road and Placer County Line. And this just kind of shows you the overlay of the residential development with aerial. You can see the open space, wetland preserve areas to the north and west of the residential So, for the low-density residential lots, they would be fifty-five hundred square feet or larger. The state residential lots, you'll see this yellow strip in the middle for the eleven lots. See if I can get her quicker here. So, that's actually would have larger lots of thirteen-five hundred square feet. The agricultural lot is thirty-four point nine acres, it's this area here. That would allow for various agricultural uses and would be maintained by the HOA. So, other facilities include two neighborhood parks, open space and wetland preserve lot, as well as two landscape lots and a lift station lot you could see here in blue. Access would be off of PFE Road to the south. This is just a conceptual plan showing the two parks, three and four. Park three would be mainly more active recreational, have soccer fields and baseball diamonds. And this shows you the various bike paths and trails. So, along Dry Creek, the northern boundary, there's a twelve-foot wide Class One Trail and a separate four-foot wide multipurpose trail as well. I wanted to note that the applicant requested, the current development agreement requires this extension, you see circled in red, to be constructed with Glen Willow. They've asked to have that timing to be able to occur with the Phase Three Silver Sage. Given that's a minor modification, we were able to do this modification to the development agreement with planning director's approval. A letter has been provided with your staff report packet today. So, this slide just shows the various types of fencing for all the different land uses. Here's the agricultural fencing, it's just a, three rails, wood rails would be used. This is your typical view fence, raw iron fencing for some of the lots. Then we have for the open space, wetland preserve area, the typical post and cable fencing. Around the existing residential lot that's out there would have this enhanced wood fencing. And then, lastly, for the entryway, there would be a community wall.
Quick question for you. What is the difference in desert, or between open, or between wetland preserve and open space?
So, the open space area would be dedicated to the county, and that would be where the Dry Creek Trail exists. Wetland Preserve area is set aside to preserve the existing wetlands, and those are tied to, it's actually south tributary, excuse me, tributary of Dry Creek in that area.
So, though, the wetlands preserve still main, the ownership is still maintained by a homeowners association or something to that effect, and the open space is deeded to the county?
Yes, that's correct. So, with regards to CEQA compliance, as I mentioned before, the final EIR was certified in 2009, it was a project EIR. The mitigation monitoring reporting program was approved in 2015. That's attachment D to your staff report today. So, according to CEQA guidelines, fifteen-one, section fifteen-one-eighty-two and fifteen-one-eighty-three, the project can be considered exempt from CEQA, and no further environmental documentation would be needed if the project could rely on the earlier EIR. Staff has determined that there's no new information showing that the project would create impacts more significant than described in the EIR, and also that the project is consistent with the specific plan. So, also, regards to public outreach, the project was presented to the West Placer MAC on August 9th, 2017, as an informational item, and then in September 13th, it was presented as an action item. At that meeting, flooding, drainage concerns were raised for the area south of PFE Road and also along the Class One Trail along Dry Creek. The applicant indicated at the meeting that there would be a number of drainage improvements that would be performed to address these concerns. Concerns were also expressed to take into consideration the urban rural interface between adjacent residential development and the proposed development within the specific plan area. At that meeting, the MAC did unanimously approve to recommend the planning commission approve the project as presented with a three-to-vote, and two members were absent at that So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions?
Let me see, when you look at the map, excuse me, yeah, Bruce Johnson here, when you look at the map, it's a fairly large subdivision with one access onto PFE Road. The map does show a trail EVA to the north. Does that exist, or will that be constructed with this project?
Right, there's, so that would be off of, I'll go back to the tentative map here, see if I could find that. Not sure if you could, you could probably see it on this slide here. So, where the lift station is, out in this area, there would be an EVA road, I believe goes along this side up to the Dry Creek Trail, and then it goes out further east to Lurka Road. So, that EVA would be in, in construction, too, along with the development as a secondary area.
The entire road, or does part of it exist now, or?
The entire road would go.
Would be constructed with this project?
Right, right.
Any other questions for Nick? Thank you, Nick.
Sure, thank you.
Now, we'll open it up for any public comment on this item, and again, as I mentioned earlier, the, oh, applicant, yes, applicant, would they like to comment? Sorry for cutting you off.
Thank you for the opportunity. I was going to do a fairly lengthy presentation, but I think Nick did a great job. So, my name's Jeff Pembstein, I'm with Town Development of Sacramento and HBT of Riola Vineyards. I'm going to keep my comments pretty simple this morning, so we've been working with staff on this map, this is the second phase of our holdings at Riola Vineyards. Appreciate all the work from planning and engineering and parks, and the myriad of folks within the county. We're excited to be moving this part of the project forward, there's a lot of goodies in this part of the specific plan, big improvements to PFE Road, and PFE and Walarca, a couple of big parks, talked about the trails improvements and the wetland preserves, so we're very excited to get this part of the project going. We affirm staff's recommendation, appreciate commission's support this morning.
Great.
Any questions?
Any questions? No, thank you.
Thank you much.
Okay, now we'll open it up for public comment, and as I mentioned earlier, I'm going to limit those comments to three minutes, so if you would like to step up and comment.
Good morning, Michael Garbedian with the Placer Group Sea Air Club. My comment is, is that there aren't any agendas left over there, and there aren't any staff reports for this, and I wonder if you could remedy that and provide those for the missing staff reports and agenda. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Can we address that, I guess, or is there a way to do that? Thank you. Any other comments on this? Well, since we're not seeing any comments now, I guess we'll close the public input on this and bring it back to the commission for your... Nick, could you put it back to the recommendation, please? Thank you. Again, what's your pleasure, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, if we're ready for a motion? Make a motion that the planning commission determine the potential impacts of the proposed vesting tentative subdivision map, which is part of the Riola Vineyard Specific Plans, are within the scope of the analysis of the 2009 Certified Riola Vineyard Final Environmental Impact Report, supported by the findings contained within the staff report.
Second. Okay, the movement seconded, roll call.
I have a first by Mr. Moss and a second by Mr. Okuchi. Mr. Herzog, or, Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Mr. Herzog?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Okuchi?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
And Mr. Nader?
Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would further move that we approve the Glen Willow subdivision vesting tentative subdivision map that will create one hundred and eighty-seven lots within the previously approved Riola Vineyard Specific Plan Area, subject to the conditions of approval and supported by the findings contained within the staff report.
Second.
I'll second that.
The movement seconded, roll call.
Got a first by Mr. Moss and a second by Mr. Herzog. Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Mr. Herzog?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Okuchi?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
And Mr. Nader?
Yes. Okay, thank you, I guess we will move, now move on to our next item. Mill Creek, single-family residential project. Before Chris gets started, any of you who are interested in speaking on this item, you need to sign in, because we're going to call you up when it becomes the public comment that, Kara, is that sign up over on the table?
Chris, good morning, commissioners. Chris Schmidt with the Planning Services, Planning Services Division. The item for you today is a public hearing to receive comment on the draft EIR for the Mill Creek project. It's a proposal by Miritage Homes for Western Placer County. Although the California Environmental Quality Act does not require a public hearing, it's county policy that we do hold an opportunity for the public to give oral testimony on draft EIR documents, and those are held before the planning commission, so we're here today. I should note that today's meeting is not to consider the merits of the project, it's just to receive comments on the environmental document. This item will be back before the commission in the fall to make a recommendation to the board of supervisors on the entitlements and on the final EIR. So, notice of today's meeting was sent to three hundred property, or, property owners within three hundred feet of the project boundaries, that includes thirty-two property owners, any person that commented on the NOP. Copies of the document were provided at the Rockland and Roseville Public Libraries, also in this building, in county clerk's offices. We provided notice of the meeting to the Western Placer MAC, an ad was placed on the second window B. We also provided notice to state and federal agencies, other public agencies and school districts, and relevant county staff. So, I just want to give you an overview of the project itself. It is in Western Placer County, straddling the Sacramento County line to the south. City of Roseville's over here. The properties are south of PFE Road and on east and west sides of Antelope Road. Here's an aerial of the project site. It includes sixty-five acres on the west side of Antelope Road and forty-five acres on the east. There's industrial properties over here. Roseville Storage is an industrial facility to the south. Here's the county line, Antelope Road, PFE Road, the shuttered Dry Creek School is over here, some rural residential here, medium-density residential in Sacramento County, and to the north is vacant grazing land and some rural residential. So, the applicant is proposing three hundred and eight... So the applicant is proposing 308 single family detached residential lots and 110 acres. There'll be private roads and gated entries. Main entry here off Antelope Road, a secondary entry also for Antelope Road for what we're calling the East Village and then entrance up here on PFE Road to serve the central and West Villages. Lots of ranging size from about 6,000 square feet in the East Village, 7,500 square, 7,500 square feet in the Central Village and about 10,000 square feet in the West Village. All the units in the West Village and half of the homes that back to PFE Road and Antelope Road in the red will be single story. So all these homes and half here and half of these. Nineteen percent of the project site would remain undeveloped, mostly in a 16-point acre open space area. There are three parks proposed, totaling 4.2 acres and a half, one and a half, or a half mile of trails through here and also through here. There'll be improvements to both PFE and Antelope Roads and also water and sewer infrastructure improvements. So there's a, a bunch of entitlements that you'll be considering this fall and I'll just briefly go through these. The applicant seeking a general plan amendment to change the designation from low density residential, industrial, commercial and green belt and open space to medium density residential and green belt and open space. A general plan amendment to remove the proposed fire station site that's shown in the land use diagram that's on the northeast corner of the project site. The fire department has determined that they don't need that station in that location. So that'll be dropped from the land use plan. A general plan amendment to modify the county's industrial residential buffer standards and that's for the area adjacent to Roseville Storage on the southern portion of the East Village. We're seeking a rezone for residential agriculture, minimum building site of 20,000 square feet, industrial park, industrial, office professional and open space to just residential single family, minimum building site of 6,000 square feet in open space. A phased tentative subdivision map for the 308 lot subdivision. A conditional use permit to allow parks and playgrounds within the open space zoning district and then a variance to allow for 50% lot coverage for one-story units where 40% is normally permitted in residential single family district. So county staff and the applicant have been working on this project for about 20 months. It went to the MAC, West Placer MAC in November 2016 as an information item. The notice of preparation that signaled that the county was going to prepare an environmental document, document was issued in May, of May 18th of 2017. And there was a public comment period and also a public hearing. That scoping meeting was held, held on June 6, 2017. And the draft environmental document was released for public review last month, June 18th of 2018. So here are the environmental issue areas that were analyzed in the draft EIR. I'm not going to go through each of these and, and tell you what the impacts are and the mitigation measures recommended are. We also looked at cumulative impacts. The, the EIR document does look at two alternatives to connect to the Dry Creek Water Treatment Plan in Roseville. The applicant is working with the city of which alternative route this pipe will take. It would either be east of Hilltop Circle or continue here to connect to an existing forest main that's over near Dry Creek and that connects over to here. So the draft EIR will look at the impacts for either of these routes and then one will be determined later. The EIR also looks at the ultimate widening of PFE Road to two lanes in each direction is that's what's shown here. The applicant is going to be building this. Public works and county staff had determined that this was a pretty significant impact, not really necessary since it's down to two lanes here. In lieu of this widening, the applicant is going to be doing fringe improvements on the west side of Antelope Road that they wouldn't necessarily have to do with their project. They would have to do the improvements on this side because their lots are over here. But we did analyze what the impacts would be if the county or someone else decides to widen the PFE Road to an ultimate width. So a couple of areas were determined to have less than significant impacts and no mitigation measures are required. Those are population and housing and impacts to public services and recreation. There were five items that were significant and unavoidable even with implementation of recommended mitigation measures. And that is the conversion of 16.5 acres of land designated unique farmland to non-agricultural uses. The state has designated the existing nursery site on the property as unique farmland and that would be converted to residential single family if the project's approved. The cumulative loss to farmland to non-agricultural use is significant and unavoidable. Accumulative loss of habitat for special standing species. Accumulated plus project traffic impacts to two intersections, one at Cook Riola Road and Vineyard Road and that's northwest of the project site. The mitigation for that intersection called for a roundabout with two lanes. There's just, the county and the community didn't feel like a two-lane roundabout is appropriate for that location. And then at PFE Road and Cook Riola Road, it's significant and unavoidable because feasible mitigation isn't available. It, there, there's not right of way available to expand that intersection. And then also the stretch between, of PFE Road between Cook Riola Road and Antelope Road is also significantly not unavoidable because the community plan calls for just two lanes there and no widening. And we don't have the right of way available to go to four lanes. The sequel law requires you to look at various alternatives and find an alternative that has less impact than the project being proposed. The document looks at three alternatives, the no project, no build alternative, that is the property would stay as it is today with no new development. Existing community plan alternative would be development according to what the zoning is out there now and then a reduced density alternative. So this is the existing community plan alternative would see 73, 73 single family homes on the western half of the project site. Along Antelope Road, we'd have 632,000 of industrial space developed and 138,000 square feet of commercial space. So that's your existing zoning today. The reduced density alternative would result in 212 single family units, 96 fewer than the proposal. Lot sizes are consistent with what is proposed for the West Village, about 10,000 square foot lots and that's on both sides of Antelope Road. So the environmental, environmentally superior alternative has been found to be the no project, no build alternative. So no new development, no impacts. However, that alternative does not meet any of the project objectives. Build out pursuant to existing community plans, so build out according to what's the zoning is, was had greater impacts than the project as proposed. So neither of these, the existing community plan or the no build alternative can be selected as an environmentally superior alternative. So the document determines that the reduced density alternative is the environmentally superior alternative to the proposed project. So opportunities for public input both today and in the future. The draft EIR is out for review. Public comment period ends at 5:00 on August 1st. Any person who submits a written or oral comment today on the draft EIR will receive a formal response to the comments and a copy of the final EIR. Our schedule calls for us going to the Western, West Placer MAC for action item likely in September and then we'd be returning to you, looking for a recommendation in the fall, September, October. And ultimately, the board of supervisors will consider the project in late fall. And with that, I'd happen to answer any questions or we can open up to public comment.
Any questions for Chris on this at this time? Okay, all right. Thanks, Chris. As I mentioned earlier, if you're going to comment on this, you need to sign up and we will call you up. Kira or somebody, would you like to get that list and you can start that? Again, I would ask that your comments be very focused and three minutes long. And as Chris was mentioning, this is only to address any questions or areas where you believe need better clarification of this. We will deal with the merits of this project in the fall when it comes back to us after it's a draft document, when it's a final document. So I reserve the right to cut you off if you start to go into the merits of this project. So again, we're staying very focused on any shortcomings that you may see or questions that you have with regards to the draft EIR. So since we have the list in hand, we will start that process. And you can keep adding, we haven't, the list is still there, so. And I guess EJ is going to call people up. And before EJ starts, again, as, as Chris mentioned, there are multiple opportunities to comment on it, obviously not just today verbally, but you can submit either through email or letter any concerns or issues or questions that you might have before August 1st. So I would recommend that you do that because then it's documented in, in writing. So as a follow-up even to today's comment, so EJ, do you want to call it the first person?
Okay, Chairman, so we have just three names on this list and then obviously there's another list you can keep signing up on. First three names are Veronica Blake, Gary Mappa and Herb Whitaker in that order.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, I'm Veronica Blake, CEO of Placer Community Foundation. Thanks for allowing me to comment. In the report, the analysis incorrectly states that the county has established a housing in Lufy of $4,342. In fact, the county has never provided evidence for the basis for that particular in Lufy. The county has accepted in Lufys in the past, but it has done so without any basis or methodology for determining the fees. And then also for, without a plan for how they would construct the units if they did accept the fees. On August 8th, the board of supervisors provided direction to staff that it would not, this is August 8th, 2017, that it would prefer not to accept in Lufys but rather see the affordable units constructed. The county shouldn't continue to use past practices as justification to mitigate affordable housing projects. The county has prepared a Housing in Lufy Nexus study that was dated November 4th, 2016 and they reviewed it at the Board of, Board of Supervisors meeting on August 8th, 2017. Table three in this document indicates that there's a maximum in Lufy of $5.15, which for a 2,200 square foot home would amount to $11,320 in in Lufys. The proposed mitigation of $4,300, $4,342 is a small fraction of what it would cost to construct the required housing. Based on this information, the proposed mitigation would result in a significant impact, not a less than significant impact. If the applicant proposes the maximum in Lufy from the November 2016 Nexus study, the potential could be less than significant. Given the workforce housing crisis that we're facing today, all projects with affordable housing requirements should be constructed and fees in lieu should only be accepted as a last resort. Thanks for allowing me to comment.
Thank you very much. The next person, EJ, I know you already read it, but.
Gary Mappa.
Okay, I guess changed his mind. Okay, next.
Herb Whitaker.
I do have some written comments that I'd like to submit to the commission. I don't know how many copies you need. Thank you for this opportunity to address the commission. My name is Herb Whitaker and I'm the managing attorney of the local office of Legal Services of Northern California. We provide free legal assistance to low-income clients in Placer County. One of our very top priorities is housing because there is an extreme crisis in Placer County with the lack of housing and lack of affordable housing. I would like to clearly state that my position at this point is that the commission, that we oppose the draft environmental report as it's written with respect to the issue of population and housing. The problem is that the project just doesn't provide sufficient affordable housing. And we think that the commission should require that this development actually produce the affordable housing, the 30 units of affordable housing, as opposed to allow for an in-lufy. I would like to say that, I would like to second the comments that were made by Veronica Blake. I think that those comments were absolutely accurate and absolutely correct. And so I, and I intended to make some of those same comments, but I don't need to now because I just want to endorse what she said. If the commission looks at the draft environmental report, the developer concludes and it's chapter 13 on housing, that there will be not, there'll be no significant environmental impacts because the developer will be allowed to pay or proposes to pay an in-lufy as per Placer Housing Element Program B14. And this is inaccurate. The Placer County Program B14 does not allow a developer to provide an in-lufy in exchange for developing the affordable housing, the 10% affordable housing that is required by Placer law. It, it contemplates that that's a possibility, but it doesn't allow for that. And the developer doesn't demonstrate how paying that in-lufy would be sufficient to mitigate the environmental impacts. Very quickly, we have a housing crisis in Placer County. The Placer County grand jury has indicated that there's a Placer, that there's a housing crisis. The grand jury indicated that we do not have an in-lufy program in Placer County. And one of the things that it recommends is that the county should enforce the 10% affordable housing requirement and should go on to develop an in-lufy. And as Ms. Blake has indicated, that's one of the things that's before the county now with the Nexus study is for the county to adopt an in-lufy, which they have not done yet. So for this developer to base its environmental review on an in-lufy, which is not, has not been adopted by the county and there is no in-lufy program for the county, would indicate that there is a significant environmental impact.
If you could wrap up your comments, that's the end of the three minutes.
So the point is, once again, as Ms. Blake indicated, the studies that have been done and that have been presented to the Placer County Board of Supervisors indicates that at a bare minimum, there would be an in-lufy requirement of $5.15 per square foot. This project does not indicate how they base their recommendation for a $4,000 in-lufy other than they just appear to pull that figure out of the air or maybe rely on some fees that were paid in the past. But that is not consistent with the Nexus study that has been presented to the, to the county. And based on the study that is before the county, the, this developer's proposal would fall woefully short of the amount of money that's recommended by that, that study and therefore it would have a significant environmental impact. And I look forward to presenting additional comments in writing before the close of the comment period. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Next two commenters are Laura Baller and Mike Garabedian.
And just to let you know, I should have said that initially, is that when that yellow light comes on, you have a minute to, to wrap up and then the red light is the end of the three minutes, so.
Good morning, I guess it's still morning. I don't have anything really significant or whatever to say. I'm just part of the Save Historic Dry Creek School, which is right next to this or whatever, and so I'm just going to bring it to your guys' attention. You know, one of my concerns always, you know, again, having grown up in the area or whatever and still being in the area and being a teacher over at Wood Creek High School is the traffic mitigation issue. I mean, obviously this is going to dump a lot of additional traffic or whatever onto that particular area. And the other thing is just, I mean, because you guys just approved, you know, or some things with the Riolo development and everything, you know, one of my concerns is always going to be that we don't end up like, kind of like what has happened at Granite Bay area. I just drove out there yesterday and it was kind of like a nightmare. I used to be able to get across this town and all the way out to Granite Bay in a blink in of an eye when I was a kid and now I, I hit like 40,000, you know, stoplights and everything else. And, you know, a lot of people unfortunately are leaving the area because of the fact that we are getting so much influx or whatever of, you know, development and that. So anyway, I'm just kind of throwing that out as a concern and again, kind of, you know, the historic nature or whatever of the area. know, the historic nature or whatever of the area, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garabedian, you're next.
Mike Garabedian for Placer Group, Monsieur Club. The only part we've reviewed is a part of the air pollution comment, and already submitted on that. I didn't see a response by staff. The staff report is still not available here at the desk either that I can see. There is an EIR there, the draft, it's dated June, though the one we looked at came out in May. In any event, the, unfortunately, the EIR concludes that because of a court decision, they don't need to disclose certain information under SEQA. Well, let's assume that's correct for the moment. That doesn't stop the county from exercising discretion to disclose that information, which I'm going to talk about, and it's certainly, under your public health, safety, and welfare, you need to hear from the staff and have information about the critical, the serious health and cancer rate contours around this, around the rail yard that affect this project, extremely close to the rail yard. So, there, there has been a study in the past that the county APCD is involved in, there have been various reports over the years. There are contours of particulate matter around the rail yard, you know, like contours on the hill, of the concentration of particulate matter. There are constant, there are contours around the showing the cancer rate contours in this area, and that is not in this document, and I, if it's in the staff report, I would be pleased to see it. But that, that analysis needs to be done by you. You can't hang your, even if it's true that SEQA doesn't have to have this information in it, you absolutely need to have that. And to hang your hat and say, well, SEQA doesn't require it, so we're not going to look at anything having to do with the public safety and welfare, which this implies. But nonetheless, even in the EIR, they go on to refer to some of these reports and very vaguely describe some of the impacts without really going into it or showing what it is. I mean, this outfit has a reputation for doing good documents, but it's your responsibility to make sure this information gets out to the public. The, I take issue with the chair, I mean, I've been to many hearings here where people were allowed to talk as long as they needed, and there wasn't a prearranged restriction on them. Strongly disagree with the chair's admonition that people are limited to three minutes, the next item isn't even up for another seven or eight minutes. So your discouragement of people or encourage them to submit, I hope that doesn't mean they aren't going to get up here so that you can hear it. I would think you, the planning commissioners and you as chair would want to make sure that the commissioners hear everything the public has to say and not discourage them from talking and limiting conversation. If somebody, in fact, I would suggest you invite back anyone that might want to say more in the, in the time allotted to this. Quite concerned about this, very, just very troubling that that major issue is not yet before you. If it is, I would certainly like to hear about it, that you have heard about it.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Anybody else signed up, EJ?
Unless Gary Mappa showed up in the room, I don't see him, so.
Okay, then we'll close the public comment on that. Again, I would encourage you, if you want to add some comments or you want to amplify the comments that you made today, that you get, submit that either by email or letter to the Planning Department before August 1st. We certainly invite all comments on this, so I would encourage you to do that. So, because this is just a hearing on the draft EIR, there's no action taken today, so that completes that issue, that item. Is there something?
I was just adding, unless there's other comments from commissioners on this item.
Yeah, is there any commissioners want to add anything?
I would just like to just briefly mention the affordable housing that was mentioned several times. I think that is a really important issue, and I'm not sure of all the county regulations, how they're written up, but I think that has to be at least clarified in the final report, because I think it is a, not only a concern, it's a real problem. I was happy in the legal services Northern California, since I'm a resident of City of Roseville, I mentioned Roseville in the bottom of the second page there, where it says that the City of Roseville is not, not showing the regional comparison, because Roseville only allows payment of an in lieu fee in rare circumstances, such as if only one affordable unit is required of a development. So, I guess Roseville is doing what these, some of these proponents or deals, so I think we need to look into that and clarify what the county ordinances really are, because I'm not familiar with all of them either, so.
Yeah, my understanding is that the City of Roseville, actually over the years, projects has, I believe, had 3,000 low-income housing built because they did not have an in lieu program.
Okay.
They actually were built, so.
Well, I think it's need to be addressed, maybe in a, in a final draft, or a final report.
And it seems like the development community hasn't exactly avoided Roseville because of it, so.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all.
Any other comments? Okay, all right, then that's the end of that item.
So we're just, Chairman, we're just a few minutes before 11 o'clock, so the next item, we'll have to wait just a few minutes.
Yeah, okay. We're going to take five for a minute before we start this next item.
We're going to take five for a minute?
Five.
What are we trading?
Yeah, five in a minute.
That's okay.
Oh, Sue, he needs to go to the back. Okay, we're going to move forward on our 11 o'clock item, and before we start, how many are people are here on this item? If you could just raise your hand that you're here because of this item. Okay. The reason I'm asking that is that the appellant has asked for a continuance of this item as they kind of addressed some issues that were kind of brought up in the report, and it's really up to the commission to decide whether they'll accept that request or whether they would go ahead and hear it today. And I wanted to be sensitive that there was a number of people here that wanted to speak to it, and it may have taken time off work or whatever to be here. I want to be sensitive to that, because what, if we do do it as a continuance, then it would probably be on one of our subsequent agendas, maybe the next one or the one after that, that we would follow up on this item. So, I guess I would ask the commission if they have a desire to move forward on this, and if you, I believe that the request was based on they were going to do some further survey work to kind of verify property lines.
Did we, Mr. Chairman, did we get the request to continue in writing, or is this verbal, or?
EJ, would you follow up?
Yeah, so we received an email on July 8th requesting that it be continued, based on their concern that the site map exhibit they had licensed professional survey preparer may not be accurate, stating that additional field surveying and research could demonstrate that the shown property lines may be misrepresented by as much as 35 feet. So I think they wanted to go back and re-verify that information.
So, I guess, again, bringing back to the commission, what's the, the position of the commission, and whether they would like to continue it or want to hear it?
Would, would it be possible to let those who showed up to speak to have their say and then just not follow up with any, any ruling or anything prior to?
So, one option for the commission is to go ahead and have staff provide their presentation, open it up for public comment, and then I would suggest at that point, continuing it to, you know, a future date.
Would that, is that satisfactory?
Yeah, I think that's good, because that way the people that did take their time out, like you mentioned, can speak to the item.
Okay, well, and it looks like we have consensus to move in that direction, so let's go forward on that, so.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I'm Patrick Dobbs from the Planning Services Division. And the next item is an appeal filed by the applicant, Kristi Dawn, on behalf of FTCRA Limited Liability Company. This is an appeal of the zoning administrator's April 19th, 2018 denial of variances for existing unpermitted structures. They include two as-built structures located within the required 30-foot side yard setback from the property line. One is an 898-square-foot covered patio, it's attached to the existing residence, that's seven feet from the east property line. There's also a 900-square-foot second dwelling unit that's on a second story of a detached garage for a total of 1,800 square feet of building area. That's approximately 14 and a half feet from the east property line. There is a third structure that's requested for variance, and that is an as-built eight-foot tall solid privacy fence located along the front setback of Atwood Road. This is the project site, it's at 10385 Atwood Road here in North Auburn, it's just about a mile and a half from the, where we're sitting today, if you go south down Richardson Drive and west on Atwood Drive, or Atwood Road. The property is one and a half acres, it's trapezoidal shaped, it's developed with a single-family dwelling and onsite septic wastewater system. It's zoned residential agricultural with a combining minimum building size of 100,000 square feet or 2.3 acres. Adjacent parcels to the northeast and south have identical zoning and range from a half acre to two acres in size, all are developed with single-family dwellings. Adjacent parcels to the west are larger, they're about five acres in size, they're zoned farm with airport overflight combining district and a 4.6 acre minimum parcel size, similarly developed with low-density residential, single-family dwelling. Surrounding properties have the same building setbacks as the subject parcel. In the left-hand picture is, for comparison, it's an aerial photo of the site in 2010. The right-hand picture is the property more recently. I've highlighted the three unpermitted as-built improvements that were requested for variances and denied by the zoning administrator in honor of the subject of today's appeal. That's the covered patio in the middle of the property, the second dwelling to the north, and the fence along Atwood Road. This is how the improvements look from the ground. On the left side of the photo is the edge of the 898-square-foot covered patio, as I mentioned, approximately seven feet from the east property line. Something to point out in this photo, the fence, probably not uncommon, the fence does not exactly follow the property line, so using the fence as a basis of measurement can be misleading. This is a photo of the 30-foot by 30-foot two-story second dwelling unit above the garage, it's 14 and a half feet from the east property line. It's worth mentioning, I think, that, you know, the building quality and materials are nice, this is not a blighted. Since this all started, a new approximately eight-foot tall solid privacy fence was constructed within the 50-foot front setback, the maximum, or maybe within the right-of-way or easement, we're not exactly sure. The maximum height for the opaque fences in the front setback is three feet tall, so that's, that also requires a variance. The applications for the variances were submitted in response to code violation. In December of 2016, code compliance mailed the property owner notice that public complaint for unpermitted construction had been submitted and to contact the county to discuss the allegations. We received no response from the property owner. In August of 2017, during a follow-up inspection, we advised the contractor who was working on the project that not only would building permits be required, but because of the location near the setback, that variance would also be required, and we issued a verbal stop-work order and mailed a notice of violation to the property owner, asking them to remove the structures or apply for the appropriate building permits and variance. Despite the notice of violation and direction to stop building, construction activity continued on the covered patio, and afterwards the fence was constructed. September 2017, the applicant submitted a survey and map exhibit. In November of 2017, we contacted the applicant to obtain a timeline for compliance and asked that they, or advised that the second dwelling unit would need to be vacated. The applicant submitted the variance application in November of 2017, I did my review in December. And as staff, when I'm looking at a variance, I'm looking at a parcel's size, shape, and topography, and so, you know, there were no known special circumstances to recommend approval of the variances, although it's non-conforming for parcel size, as I mentioned, it's a two-point acres, 2.3 acre zoning, and it's a one and a half acre parcel. It does conform to parcel width requirements, the shape of the parcel's not really an issue, it has four boundary lines that are predominantly straight, the topography's flat, and surrounding natural and built environment do not limit the buildable area to the point of infeasibility to comply. So we mailed an incomplete letter, we asked for some additional information about specific details, floor area, building height, fence details, the rationale as to why other areas weren't feasible, and demonstration that this was a departure from the minimum development standards. We received a partial response from the applicant, two separate letters in February of 2018, they're included as Attachment B. In those letters, Ms. Dawn indicates that she was deeded the property in March of 2017, and all the structures were completely built at that time. The second letter characterizes other properties in the neighborhood as having similar issues as justification for the establishment of the structure on the subject property at reduced setbacks. But they didn't provide any specific information as to why alternative building sites that meet setbacks were not considered. The zoning administrator first heard the project on March 15th of 2018. Staff presented the zoning administrator with an analysis of the variance request and recommended that the request be denied. Prior to the hearing, we received written correspondence from a neighbor that sewage disposal system for the secondary dwelling unit had failed during a heavy rainstorm, resulting in sewage effluent flowing onto his property. He also stated some, he felt there were inaccuracies in the applicant's survey map. Public testimony was given at that March 15th zoning administrator meeting, cited concerns about privacy and compatibility resulting from the proximity of the improvements near the property lines, as well as health and safety concerns related to the potential for neighboring domestic wells to be impacted from untreated sewage discharge. The applicant's contractor, Mr. Rick Ladd, spoke on behalf of the applicant and disputed the claims of the effluent on the neighbor's property, and said that the building didn't pose any health and safety concerns, and, and that the, stating the improvements in question were constructed by licensed contractor and built to code. The zoning administrator's immediate concern was that without adequate sewage disposal to be a system that could be approved, the variance for the secondary dwelling could not be approved. And so no action was taken by the zoning administrator on March 15th, and instead, the ZA continued the hearing to April 19th to provide the applicant time to work with Environmental Health Services to determine if there's, you know, the requirements to construct a septic system for the secondary unit. Prior to that April 19th hearing, the applicant hired a septic consultant. They conducted soils testing to determine what type of system could be improved to serve the second dwelling unit and identify repair areas for the primary and second dwelling units. That soils testing is included in, as Attachment G of your packet. The consultant excavated five mantles on the property and determined that none of the mantles met the suitable soil depth for any type of permitted septic system in Placer County. During that April 19th ZA hearing, the applicant's contractor, Rick Ladd, indicated that the septic system was not leaking and just needed to be brought up to code. After listening to the presentation and public testimony, the zoning administrator denied the variances, and in doing so, determined that there were no special circumstances to justify the, granting the variances, and according to the county's Environmental Health Department, at this point in time, there was no realistic sewage disposal option to accommodate the increased residential living area. And even some question as to whether the property's existing septic system is appropriate and functioning properly. The applicant filed the appeal on April 26th. In her statement of appeal, it's included as Attachment A, in her statement of appeal, she asserts that the improvements were completely, were completed prior to her assuming ownership of the LLC. She's had contractors look at the work and confirm that everything's built to code.
Patrick, we have a question.
Yes, sir.
If I heard you correctly, the appellant said that in March of 2017, when, when title was transferred to her, that the improvements were complete, but did I not hear you say that in August of that year, you issued a stop-work notice?
Yes, that's correct, Commissioner.
What work was going on at that time?
My understanding is that the second unit had been completed, there was some finishing work that was being done on the covered patio, and the fence hadn't even started at that Again, her assertions is that she's had contractors look at the work and things are built to code. As she's become more aware of building setbacks and looked around the neighborhood, she's noticed a lot of non-conforming structures, that some of them look dangerous, she assumes many of them might be unpermitted. She assumes many of them might be unpermitted, and she feels that she's unfairly been singled out. And finally, this has been costly and stressful. She wants to make things right and is ready to move on. Despite the applicant's contentions, the Development Review Committee recommends the planning commission deny the project. The appeal hearing was properly noticed. No additional public comments were received. The denial of a project is exempt from sequel review. And so, there's two actions we're asking of you to deny, the appeal filed by FTCRA LLC, and I'm told the zoning administrator's decision to deny the variance request, supported by the findings contained in the staff report. I have colleagues from Environmental Health and Code Compliance here today, and we're able to answer your questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Any questions for Patrick at this time? Okay, thank you, Patrick. Give the appellant an opportunity to speak, if she would like to do that now. Is she here? Or somebody on her behalf, I guess? And if you identify yourself, please.
Good morning. My name is Dino Petrovic.
Steve Mackey.
Kristy Dawn.
I know the Mackeys from the Health Club. I have 30 years' experience in real estate and title. I'm retired. Last evening, I spoke to the neighbor at 10401, Mrs. Piñata, and sorted out her concerns. I'm meeting with her husband on Sunday. We're waiting for the surveyor to finish the survey. We're trying to deal with all the parties concerned to try to come to some resolution with this. This is why we're requesting an extension.
Okay, all right. Any questions for the appellant at this time?
Is this a separate survey or one that, just an extension of one that's been going on?
K-2 appraisers.
Excuse me?
K-2 appraisers. The, the appraising company that has been going on that did the tentative survey.
Yeah, I guess I don't know if I heard that correctly, but there's, there's some surveys, there's the property surveys in our package. And so, you're saying these are incorrect, or is this something that's being corrected?
Actually, a K-2 engineering, who did the initial survey, because they're very busy and were backlogged, they, they had given us a survey early on, but they didn't stamp it. And the, and the county, when we were corresponding back and forth, so they couldn't acknowledge it without a surveyor stamp. They ultimately did stamp it, but with the stamp, they put a large disclosure that they couldn't guarantee anything as accurate or correct without a more in-depth survey to find monuments that was, that was just relayed to us on Friday. So that's why on Sunday, we asked for the extension, because it, it didn't have any accuracy that he could guarantee. So, we, we engaged with him, agreed to pay the additional monies, and that's why we're asking for the extension of time, as well as we've engaged with the neighbors, the adjoining neighbors, to try and work out adjustments in property lines to, to meet the setback variance.
Okay. Any other questions of the appellant? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll open it up for public comment on this. I would ask that you stay focused on what you'd like to make, comments to the commission, so that you would keep it within a three-minute timeframe. And I would ask, I know this has been very emotional for the community, that you be civil in the way that you approach this. We've asked Deputy Sheriff to be in the back of the room to ensure that that happens. So, anybody who wants to get up and speak on this, certainly open that up. Or did I scare everybody?
I think you scared everybody.
Sorry. Didn't mean to do that. I want to be very open. Anybody want to get up and talk about this, they certainly can. Or, you know, obviously, we may, we're leaning towards continuing this item. So, I want to be sensitive to those that came for this item. You know, if you've taken time off work, if you want to say something, this is the time to do it. Okay, all right. Well, then, I'm going to bring it, close it for public comment, bring it back to the commission for what you would like to do.
Do we need a motion to, to move it to the next agenda?
Right, to continue it.
I'll go ahead and motion that we continue this item in our next meeting, next available meeting.
I'll second it.
So, so the next available meeting is July 26th. The meeting after that is August 9th. I'm not sure about the timing, that's necessary to get that.
Does that give you enough time to have the surveyor do the work? Have they given you a timeline?
We need 45 to 60 days to finish up the survey.
Okay, well, that's a little further out than we were talking about. So, shall we modify that?
Chairman, or question, if I could, please?
Okay.
Our decision here, is this a final decision, or is this appealable to the board?
Whatever decision is made by the planning commission is appealable to the Board of Supervisors.
Maybe we ought to just proceed today.
To make a decision? I don't know.
I don't think so. I think, I'm of the opinion we need to.
Need to hear the additional information. I'm not sure that it has to go on for another two months, but I would think they would be able to get the information within 30 days or something like that. Maybe not by the next meeting, or even the, the meeting after that, which would be less than 30 days. Or maybe that would be 30 days. What, our August meeting, our first one in?
So, two meetings in August, August 9th and August 23rd. And, you know, not, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm pretty sure August 9th will be down here in Auburn, but I can't guarantee that for the 23rd. There may be a Taco meeting coming up.
And August. And they're requesting 45 days, but if, you know, it's up to the commission to decide when they want to continue this too, or if they want to continue it.
If I can just, we're, we're at the mercy of K-2 engineering. We'd like to, we'd like to come to a conclusion, but because he's so backlogged, that's, it's him, and when that's, we just responded with an email per his instructions. So, it's, we'd like to, like to come to a conclusion as soon as, but that's.
You know, I kind of have a question. What's going to change? What would change with the new survey?
Because, because the setbacks are as much as 35 feet into the neighbor's yard. So, that would, would change the building not being compliant to being compliant as far as the setbacks are concerned. So, it's, it's a big change in perception, because currently, they're saying the setbacks aren't, aren't accurate or, or acceptable with the new surveyor, that he's claiming there's 35 feet that we do gain on the neighboring property. That changes everything, is what they're saying.
I got another question.
All right, question?
Question for, if, by some chance, the, the survey did show that the setbacks weren't an issue, the appellant is still going to have to go obtain permits and have this work inspected properly and pay all necessary fees and, and remove ROMEX that's sitting outside of electrical connections and what have you, and, and bring it up to code?
Hey, say, run that by me one more time.
If, if the survey did ultimately show that property lines are inaccurate as, as we see them now, and that the new lines would not make setbacks an issue, they're still going to have to go get a permit and inspections and pay fees and, and bring anything that's not up to code, up to code?
These are all structures that have been built without building permits. So, they would have to be inspected to determine if they even meet building code.
And so, that would all still happen with or without the, the setback issue being in place?
Right.
Correct. And I might add, in regards to the surveyor, our staff has spoken with the surveyor who prepared the exhibit, and they believe the, the map to be an accurate representation of property lines out there. I understand the appellant indicated, or representative of the appellant indicated that the, the plans have been stamped by the surveyor. You know, I don't know if that is, you know, that's, to me, that seems like, you know, the surveyor's seal that all the information is correct.
We, we obviously still have an environmental issue as well.
Mr. Moss, if I could just mention one thing? The, the pictures that you're seeing, those are the neighbors, those, those examples are the neighbors, the, the ROMEX that you're referring to, and the, the setbacks not complying, those are all neighboring properties. Those aren't the, the subject property of.
Okay, that helps.
Yeah. So, every one of those are what, what the references and pictures, that they, not one of them are conforming, setback, the electrical that you see, so on and so forth. Our, our admission was that, that it's been inspected by two different contractors, stating that everything's to code from a safety standpoint. I do understand entirely the, the cause of it not being with permits. We're not denying that. We're here to comply and, and bring this thing to, to any expectations, but I did want you to know that those pictures are of adjoining non-conforming properties within 500 feet of the subject.
Okay, I have a question. You know, it seems to me that by extending this 30 or 45 days, you know, what's really going to change here when we come back to a hearing? If it turns out that they do the survey and find out that they don't need a variance, then that issue just goes away by itself, right? And the other issues are all going to have to be dealt with anyway. So, I guess in my mind, I'm kind of questioning why we would extend this and have the hearing all over again.
I might, I might, I might add that, going back to the zoning administrator's decision, the bigger issue is that there is not adequate sewage disposal for the second residential unit, and possibly not even any feasible option in the future for adequate sewage disposal. And that's why the zoning administrator denied this request.
That was actually.
That only pertains to the secondary dwelling, not necessarily to the patio cover and the fence. But there is no way the zoning administrator can make a decision to approve it when there is no sewage disposal for that secondary.
And so, I think that's, that's kind of where I'm coming from, and the variance issue as far as the property lines go and the setbacks, you know, that could take care of itself.
Well, actually.
With the survey being.
We've, we've been in contact with, with another septic company that says that there's a way to tie into the main septic and potentially satisfy, you know, all the proper septic issues. If not, then we would discontinue the septic, so, and, and wait for the sewer that's coming down Atwood, and we're being told, supposedly in the next 12 months, so.
Yeah, those are all things, though, that, I mean, I guess what I'm thinking is, we're just going to drag this on by continuing it, and, you know, when we meet again, we may be facing all the same issues all over again. And so, if these issues are taken care of, either through building permits or a re-survey that says you don't need a variance for the property line, if, if all those things clear up, then, you know, you don't have a problem. But for now, for us to come back and hear the same thing all over again in 45 days, to me, doesn't really make a lot of sense. So, I would, I would propose that to the commission.
Because of the, because of the.
That we go forward with, with this hearing and make a decision.
Might as well test it. Do you want to make a motion?
Okay. Yeah, I would make a motion that we deny the appeal filed by FTRCA LLC.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Open it up for kind of discussion before we vote.
One question. If it was denied today, what are the next steps that the county would be taking? And does that impede them in resolving the issue?
So, there's a couple of things. There's an appeal, right? This decision could be appealed to the Board of Supervisors. If there was not an appeal, then it could be, it would be, you know, remanded back to the Code Compliance Office to, to fix a violation.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on that?
I, I think I need to ask a question about, I made a motion earlier. Do I need to withdraw that? Or?
To extend, to, to continuance? I don't think it got a second, so.
It did get a second.
It did?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Didn't hear that second.
The other thing, if I could add, if I could add one more thing?
Well, let me, let me address my, my question for maybe counsel.
We don't need to have comments.
But I may have missed your motion.
I think we're going to make.
If there was a motion and a second, and it was voted on, then that would be, that would be a ruling from the commission. I didn't, I didn't hear a vote on it.
Well, I, there was no vote, but I had made a motion, it got seconded, that we postponed this to the next available meeting, and then we got on the discussion about the next available meetings, and so, I'm, I'm happy to withdraw that motion.
Well, okay.
So, if there was a motion and a second, then you would need to vote on that, and then you could, depending on the outcome of that vote, then you could make a subsequent motion.
Okay.
Well, then, let's vote on that first, for continuance, okay? The second, I think.
I will second.
I think for purposes of clarity, it may be helpful to restate the motion, so everyone's on the same page.
My original motion was to postpone or to, to continue this discussion at the next available meeting, was the language that I used, and that was seconded, seconded by Mr. Haughey.
Okay. About a roll call. Kara?
All right, I have a first by Mr. Herzog and a second by Mr. Haughey. Mr. Haughey?
Yes.
Mr. Herzog?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Rokuchi?
No.
Mr. Moss?
No.
Mr. Nader?
No. Okay, that did not pass, so do you want to restate your?
Yeah, I would make a motion that we deny the appeal filed by FTRCA LLC.
And I will still second that.
Okay, we have a.
All right.
And a second.
I have a first by Mr. Johnson and a second by Mr. Moss.
And just one question. Supported by the findings is A through E?
Yeah, supported by the findings.
We have in our staff report, it wasn't up there, but it's in our staff report.
You're good with that?
Yes.
You're both good with that? Okay, all right.
All right, Mr. Haughey?
Yes.
Mr. Herzog?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Rokuchi?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
And Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Okay, and also, I'd make the motion that we uphold the zoning administrator's decision and deny the variance, supported by the findings stated in the staff report.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, and movement and seconded, roll call.
The first by Mr. Johnson and a second by Mr. Moss. Mr. Haughey?
Yes.
Mr. Herzog?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Rokuchi?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
And Mr. Nader?
Yes. And you have the opportunity to appeal this to the board. You have 10 days to do that in, and it's $602 to appeal it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. And now, we move on to our next item, which is, let's see, our tiny houses. Tiny houses on wheels.
I'm Emily Setzer.
Good morning.
And I'll be talking about the tiny house on wheels draft zoning text amendment today. And we're here today because last August, 2017, the board adopted the county's housing strategy to address the need for a mix of housing types. And tiny houses was just one piece of that puzzle, as you can see here. The overall housing strategy encompasses lots of other options, such as duplexes and condos, senior housing, cluster housing, junior ADUs, accessory, or ADUs, accessory dwelling unit, and so forth. Additionally, the county has received desire from the public to look at tiny houses, and in a recent flash vote county survey, dozens of respondents submitted comments asking the county to look at tiny houses, and tiny house communities also. Tiny houses on wheels would achieve some of the county's goals and benefits in the housing strategy, because they increase the availability of a mix of housing types, and they increase housing affordability. By being so small, they are naturally more affordable. They are also transportable, and they can serve several demographics: single people, families, retired, workforce housing, et cetera. And because they are not typically built on. And because they are not typically built on site, although they could be, that building and installation process is expedited compared to traditional stick-built construction. So what is a tiny house on wheels? Well, it should look more like the figure on the left and not like a typical recreational vehicle, as shown on the right. The California Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, does consider tiny houses to be RVs. And so we, as a county, propose that they would be treated more like houses and less like RVs, although they would get certain certifications that RVs do get as well. The proposed definition in the zoning text amendment says that tiny houses on wheels are separate independent living quarters smaller than 400 square feet. They include basic functional areas that support normal daily routines, so that's your bathroom, your kitchen, and a sleeping area. They are mounted on a wheeled trailer chassis, and they are titled, licensed, and insured to tow legally under the California Department of Motor Vehicles. They include your basic necessities for living, so your bathroom, your kitchen, your sleeping area. They're just a very small how, compact house.
I have a question, one question.
Sure.
You said that they're not going to be, not like the recreational vehicles, so that I'm assuming these all have to be connected utilities, where they're parked?
They will, and I will get to that, too.
Okay.
Yeah. There are many standards that would come in this ordinance, too. They, because they are designed to look like a traditional house, albeit smaller, they, the intent here is that they would blend in with residential neighborhoods, and they would maintain that residential character. So where are tiny houses allowed today in the county? Right now, they are allowed as primary or secondary dwelling units if they were built stick-built construction and they meet the Placso County Building Code and they're on permanent foundations. So right now, I think our minimum, minimum size for a house is somewhere close to 200 square feet, and that's based off the state building code. And so we don't really have a minimum, many agencies have minimum square footages for houses, such as 1,000 square feet. We don't have that. So you could build a very small house per state building code right now. A tiny house on wheels, however, is only allowed in certain districts and for limited timeframes right now. So they would most likely, in most instances, be considered incidental camping, which has a time limit of 30 days. And they would be allowed in RV parks. Or if somebody was building, constructing a permanent dwelling on their property, it could be a temporary dwelling while they're constructing their permanent dwelling. Some key standards in this ordinance propose that tiny houses on wheels would only be allowed in zones that, where single-family and secondary dwelling units are already allowed today. We're not suggesting that they're allowed anywhere new where a house could not normally already be located.
Emily.
Emily. Would they, would they be allowed as the primary structure on that property?
They would have to meet all underlying zoning and land use regulations, so height and setbacks, for example. And they would have to connect to county-approved water supply and sewage disposal facilities. So they would have to connect to either public water or well and septic or sewer, as approved by the county. They would need to be designed to look like a conventional residential structure. And the text in the ordinance says that that would be done by including design features and materials typically used for houses, such as typical siding and roofing materials, pitched roofs, eaves, residential windows, those sorts of materials. And then they would have to maintain proof of compliance with the American National Standards Institute 119.5 and 1192, which is also the National Fire Protection Association standards, 1192 and 70. And those are typical RV standards. So if you go get an RV today and you buy it, they typically meet those standards. And many of the manufacturers of tiny houses on wheels are building to those standards We did go down to Wood Creek High School and, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yes. I was wondering how it's different from a mobile home. I know they can be larger, they can be movable, but how does it relate to mobile homes?
Manufactured homes have a different certification process through the state, so it's a slightly different process. Tiny houses are being built in Northern California right now. We went down to Wood Creek High School in Roseville, and their high school program, in their high school program, high school students are constructing them right now. And their tiny houses that they're constructing are actually going towards veterans' housing right now. But other high schools in Northern California are doing this, and there are manufacturers in Fresno and Sacramento and Loomis who are building them and selling them right now. One other aspect here is that if the commissioners are interested, we could invite a tiny house manufacturer to bring one here or organize a tour for the commissioners to go see them. So right now, we've been going to all of the municipal advisory councils. We've, I think, hit three or four now, and we'll be continuing that circuit and presenting and collecting feedback. And then we will come back to the planning commission for a hearing, most likely in fall, and then Board of Supervisors after that. And so I'm happy to answer any other questions or consider any input or direction that the commissioners would like to provide.
I think you've got a number of questions here. Jeff, you want to start?
I'm sure.
I just was wondering if, in county's radar, are we considering the potential to create tiny lots for these tiny homes?
That is certainly something that could be considered.
And, and the mobile home question was one I, similar, the- Let me think on this one more, I'll go back to it.
Rich, you have a question?
Yeah, maybe I'll, I think I'm headed towards the same question on the mobile home, but basically, these are licensed by the state, probably DMV or whoever does the licensing on mobile homes. So these would be licensed to, to be taken on the highway?
They would have to be licensed, they would have to be legal to tow on the highway through the DMV. Yes.
Okay. And so basically, when we've dealt with mobile home parks before, there's a kind of a division in the responsibility that the county takes and the state takes. And so maybe you could explain that to us here with regards to the tiny houses?
So on the county's end, as proposed in this ordinance right now, we would ask that any owner of a tiny house on wheels would maintain proof of compliance and certification with those ANZI and NFPA standards, and that they would be licensed and insured to legally tow on the highway through the California DMV. The state would not get involved. The state does get involved in manufactured or mobile home parks, but the state considers tiny houses right now, they've siloed them into the category of RVs. And so that's how we are treating them as far as certifications go. But we recognize that, in reality, members of the public don't necessarily treat and intend to live and function in an RV like they do in their tiny houses. The tiny houses do come with an intent to live in them for a semi-permanent to long time and not necessarily be towed around every weekend as one would do with an RV.
Okay. And these would have to be set up, they'd have to honor the setbacks, I guess, would they set up?
Yes. They would have to honor any underlying setbacks, height requirements, any underlying regulations for that zone district.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Jeff, did you think what you wanted to say?
You were saying that they would have to be continually licensed and insured to be towable down the road. So that would prevent one who intended it to be permanent in its location from non-opping it?
Are you talking about if they'd like to take them off of the wheels and put them on a permanent foundation?
Well, that, or just leave them on the wheels. There's, there's, you know, DMV lets you say, "I'm not going to operate my vehicle on the highway," and therefore you pay a substantially reduced registration cost, and you're no longer required to insure it for the public loss and public liability and so forth that is associated with an automobile going down the road. And to me, that would make sense that somebody be allowed to do this.
So for the non-operable aspect of that-
It's not non-operable, it's just that you're not-
You're not operating it, yes. We can look into that, certainly. And I will say also, if they, if the owner wanted to take the tiny house off of the wheels and place them on a permanent foundation, the moment that would go on a permanent foundation, the building code would need to be upheld.
And chances are, then, it would not comply?
Probably not, unless it was originally built with that in mind.
Okay. Nathan, you have some questions?
Yeah, just, I think one of the rationales is the affordable housing for this.
Yes.
And I'd like to hear, what's the estimated cost for the range? I know you could probably spend, you could go upwards of, as high as you want, but what is the range to address the affordable housing?
So the costs I've seen, and in, if you're going to buy a tiny house right now, manufactured already, I've seen costs ranging from about $50,000 to $100,000. I have seen some instances of people who made, who built them themselves, and they were less expensive than that. And so there are some additional costs that would be considered, the property, you know, if you had family or a friend that you could put on your, your tiny house on their property, that would certainly reduce costs. But if you had to go buy property, that would be another one, and then the sewer and the septic is another consideration. But overall, they do seem to be less expensive than going out and buying a house on a property right now. And the other thought is that they would also increase the amount of rentals in the county.
And is there an estimated amount of insurance for, for this, you know, mobile, I mean, if the home's moving, there's probably going to be some escalated insurance with that.
Yeah, I'm not aware of insurance costs, but we can look into that as well, just to get more information.
I think it helps your presentation-
Sure.
If you have some numbers to include, if you're going to use the rationale of affordable housing, I think you should demonstrate how that's accomplished, because I am passionate about that, and I think that's an important topic for us.
Sure, we can do that. Thank you.
Anders?
A question. What are the requirements on the property site? Are you building a pad? Are the connections similar to an RV park?
The connections would have to be, as approved by the county's environmental engineering and environmental health departments. I actually have a slide that might be useful as an extra slide with some questions and answers that we've gotten so far. And in the ordinance, to answer the first part of that question, in the ordinance, there is a section that says, talks about access and any requirements that would need to be made if that property adjoined a county-maintained highway, and requirements and standards per the county's land development code. So that is in the ordinance. Some common questions we've gotten are whether fees could be charged for electrical plumbing and sewer and septic permits, and the answer is yes. Is electrical power required? No. They would have to either get electric set up or prove that self-reliance is okay, and the county's building department would help with that. For example, they could rely on solar power generation. Traffic fees, for traffic fees, this would be treated similar to how we treat a manufactured home. So we don't charge traffic fees for temporary dwellings, not on permanent foundations right now, because the code ties traffic fees to a permanent foundation or building permit. Some other questions we've gotten are, could you have two on one property? And if this draft ordinance went forward, as is written today, you could have one as the primary dwelling in it and one as the secondary dwelling. And how do they differentiate from a guest house? Well, our county's definition of a guest house is that they don't include a kitchen and they cannot be rented out. So a tiny house on wheels, per this definition, would not be the same as a guest house. And RV and water hookups for electrical would be okay, but sewer and septic would need to be permanently, permanent hookups.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Kind of a follow-up on Nathan's question, is that, is, how truly affordable is it? Now, if somebody goes out and purchases a lot, a bare lot, let's say it doesn't have, currently doesn't have water or sewer access, and they intend to put, park one of these on there, the, as Mr. Moss just pointed out to me, that the sewer and water hookups for the fees, I mean, I think for the sewer, I think it's almost $10,000 now for just the hookup for the sewer. And the water is also even more expensive, I believe, than that. So I think it would be helpful for people, as they consider this, to understand all of the input costs that are going to be related to that, if it's on a, you know, a fresh, let's say, a fresh piece of property that they're intended to put this on, so. The other question I had is that, could these be parked in RV facilities? There's, for example, there's one, a brand-new one that just opened at the end of Bell Road at Highway 80, and there are a lot of RVs parked in there right now, but could these also be parked in there?
I'll answer the second part first. Yes, they could be, they could be parked in RV parks. And right now, tiny houses on wheels aren't allowed in a lot of places, and so that's where people are parking them.
Are they limited on how long they can stay in those RV parks?
I'm not aware of a time limit, but there may be.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
And we can work on creating a more, a more transparent and elaborate view of the costs and all related costs that are associated with, if you wanted to actually put one down on a piece of property.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? We open it up to the public? Jeff, do you have something?
Just, I, general comment, I mean, if the goal of this is to create affordable housing in quantity, there's got to be proportionate-sized lots and utility hookups and everything to go with it, or they are going to become cost prohibitive. You've got, you're, you know, putting in a septic system is not cheap, hooking up to a sewer is not cheap, water hookups, the permits associated with that septic system and all that are not inexpensive. All of that also drives up the property taxes annually. It no longer becomes affordable housing, it's just a cute, small, little house. But the reality of it, all of a sudden, being a new opportunity for people to have an affordable place to live, is not going to happen.
Okay. All right. Any other comments? Okay, thank you, Emily.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Before I open this up for a public comment, I think it would be very helpful if you would also document your comments and send them into the county. That way, we have it on record. I mean, obviously, we're going to have a record if you get up and speak today, but I think it's always good to put that down on paper. And you can actually, obviously, have more of an opportunity to amplify your comments through documenting it. So I would ask that you stay focused on what comments you want to make and keep them to three minutes, and so there will be a time element on this. So anybody who would like to comment on this, they're more than welcome to step up. And please state your name.
My name is Tom Jones. I live in 12331 in Klein Drive, Auburn, California. I'm a 50-year licensed insurance broker. I can shed a little light on what you're saying. RVs, if they're self-propelled, you buy a policy that provides personal minimum liability of $15,000, $30,000. If it's not self-propelled, then the vehicle that's pulling it is where the liability comes from. Your problem, from an insurance perspective, is first- Your problem, from an insurance perspective, is first, is it a homeowner policy, or is it an RV policy? And that would be a significant difference. The question I have as a homeowner is if my neighbor decides to do a lot split and put one on his lot and set it up for the kids, am I going to be notified? Because this is kind of a unique zoning, or a use of zoning. The second question, of course, is, is Janine and the assessor going to be taxing us as real property, or is it going to be a HUD annual fee, like mobile homes and RVs pay? So, those are issues that are of concern to me, and I like, I like the idea of tiny houses. But I would say that you've got a lot more digging to do to get the kind of information that you're going to need, so that you have bona fide information.
Yeah, those are good questions.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Marilyn Jasper, and will submit, I will submit comments in writing. Totally in favor of tiny houses as a general concept. My late husband designed small houses, and back in nineteen sixty-nine, we built four-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot home that we, on a foundation with permits, that we lived in for ten years, two dogs, two cats, and then added a hundred square feet to make it five-fifty for another fifteen years. It's very doable, very livable. And then here comes the big but. You have, it's been alluded to, affordable. I, I see that in the background as one of the reasons for going this route. I don't believe, number one, that it is, it qualifies as affordable, but if it does, say, there's somewhere in here, there's incentives. So, say those do kick in and make it affordable, I think that's great, but we need to not hang the hat on affordable. That's just kind of a deception. At one of the, one of the MACs, it was stated that there will be no increase in property taxes on the dwelling. So, that's neither here nor there, but maybe that will make it. Another item in the background says, "An offset associated transportation-related environmental impacts." Again, I think that's really misleading. If you've got parcels that can have a second, or two tiny houses, the transportation impacts are going to be doubled. So, I, I just don't, I would prefer that those things be taken out of the reasons for tiny houses, that they, they are misleading, and there will be traffic inputs. Is that one minute? Okay. How are the, say, they do go, let me skip ahead here. With these extra, the parking space, there's some interesting qualifications on the parking. You only need two. And then for the tiny houses, you don't need anymore. There's some stipulations in there that I'm not real clear about. On the setbacks, I heard today that the underlying setbacks will stay, but if you look at page, under section F, second paragraph, page eleven, it talks about five-foot setbacks from, if you, I think it's going more into second dwellings, but there's some confusion there. Who's going to enforce? I, I see there'll be enforcement, but what, what are the penalties? They have to get that tiny house out of there? Who's going to pay for the moving of that? There's, there's some interesting, maybe that's not important to have, have, and the other thing is zoning clearance? I don't think it should be a zoning clearance. That was, your neighbors are not notified on that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Look forward to getting that in writing.
Good morning. Sandy Harris, Granite Bay. I just was aware of this yesterday. It's new to me, and I thought I was up on the zoning text amendments. It says, "Only be allowed in single-family and accessory dwelling units." Where in Placer County will I be able to live where single-family zoning actually means single-family? You've already passed the secondary dwellings, and you can have a secondary dwelling and a guest house on your property. Can you also have one of these? How many are we going to limit our properties to? I sent out a couple emails that this was coming up, and it's pretty negative coming back, some of the input I've had. Eligible for fees, will they also have to pay school and fire fees? What type of kitchen facilities will they have? Will they be a complete kitchen, or hot plates, and that type of thing? Tiny houses weren't part of the vetting process when the ZTA was originally presented at MAC, and this has not come to our MAC yet. Could variances be given for larger than the four-hundred-square-feet? I don't have a problem with tiny houses, it's the fact that they're on wheels. To me, that makes them a trailer. If you, if you have one of these parked in your property, they're guests who could be there permanently. These units are basically trailers, but some PR person came up with the name "tiny houses" to make them sound more trendy and glamorous. And as far as these comments about affordability, I agree with what I've heard. And will they depreciate or appreciate? Do they lower the property values of other homes in the area where they exist? When it comes to MAC, we'll probably have a lot more information. Marilyn evidently has something, I just saw the staff report. I'll have to go on and try to find more details on this. But I don't think they've been very well-vetted.
Yeah, well, hopefully, we will do that going forward. Thank you, Sandy. Appreciate it. If you also submitted some written comments on that, too.
Good afternoon. Check the clock. Gary Mappa, I live in Applegate. Overall, I think the tiny house on wheels is a pretty good opportunity. Right now, as far as the accessory dwelling units go, I believe last year in Placer County, there couldn't have been more than sixteen or seventeen that were actually applied for. So, if you look at the total number of population and housing opportunities, it's actually disgraceful to not have enough units being put into the marketplace and opportunity for people that need housing. I personally went in maybe a month ago to talk about an accessory dwelling unit to put on my property, to help somebody in the family, and by the time I'd walk out the door with permits alone, it'd be forty thousand dollars, just to get the permit. Then I'd have to deal with environmental health, as much as I love them, and building department, fire, school impact fees, ARD, then financing. You're not going to get financing if you've got a good-sized mortgage right now. Good luck getting financing for a secondary dwelling. The one thing that was a positive about the ADU ordinance last year is they agreed to allow non-owner-occupied secondary dwellings, which opened up the market a little bit more for people that have rental properties, that they could add an additional unit, which would help increase our housing stock. Right now, we all know that, I mean, housing is just virtually impossible. There's vacant parcels out there right now that could take advantage of this type of opportunity, and at least give somebody a place to do this, to live. Yeah, I kind of hate to see somebody get a free ride on property tax, because I'm getting, my wallet cleaned out quite a bit with my own housing. But I think going forward with this type of concept, it's a big deal. It's important. So, I think we should really work in a positive direction to get something like this approved.
Okay. Thank you, Gary.
I'm Genevieve Marsh. I'm a local architectural designer and millennial in Auburn, and I have a slightly different perspective on tiny houses in the room. I design a lot of small agile structures, and tiny houses are a part of that market. And I see them as really exciting, and as part of a really big trend in multi-generations, including millennial, where people are wanting to interact increasingly with tangible, real experiences as life becomes more digitized, and that tiny houses are a response to wanting to be a part of the civic community in a way that is becoming increasingly inaccessible, especially in suburban areas. So, tiny houses deliver this kind of civic experience in several ways. One is the experience of building or commissioning your tiny house. Doing that is an act of having to engage with many people in the local community across traditional cultural barriers, and, and getting out and figuring out how to make it happen is something that is really popular as like a life journey, personal development thing for young people. At the same time, living in a tiny house is a type of pledge to engage with community and place and civic life, because a house that is so small cannot have everything in it. You can't be this self-contained, like cocooned unit. For example, you have to grocery shop more often, utilize the public library, co-work space, the print shop, because you can't have your big printer at home. So, as people's house, as people's income is becoming more volatile, and working from home and alternative options are becoming more interesting and more viable, having the ability to live small but still engage with your community, because you have to get out and about, is really important. On other notes, tiny houses are a huge place of innovation. Yes, there is the traditional side to it, but also universities and companies use it as a place to do proof of concepts across sector, from mechanical engineering, structural engineering, design, different home goods things. And those proof-of-concept models then get scaled up into our larger housing typologies and building typologies. So, if people would be able to actually buy and use them at a smaller scale, then people can have better quality of life and products without having to have this big expense. Thank you.
Before you leave, I was just going to say, I think it's important for us to hear from your generation, because you look at the world differently than we have. And so, I hope that you'd be really engaged in this discussion as it moves through the process, and certainly submit whatever you think is appropriate in writing as well.
Thank you.
My name's Josh Cibrowski. I live just down the road in Lincoln, and a friend of mine actually emailed me last night about this meeting. I wish I could have been here at the beginning. I had some other commitments already today. I own a manufacturing company, and we're actually creating a new type of tiny house, which the city of Lincoln is looking at approval on right now. And we've got some friends in Rockland, Roseville, Yuba City, who are looking at it as well in the Bay Area. Our concept's a little bit different. Ours can have foundations, but they do not absolutely need foundations. Certain cities have ordinances where you need to have a foundation in order to register it as a, as a dwelling structure. But the home price actually is thirty thousand dollars for a two-hundred-square-foot home, which has a convertible daybed, which turns into a sofa and table by day, and it's a bed by night. It's got its own kitchen, and kind of the nice thing about it is we don't need to take any fences down, we don't need to do much to get it into a backyard. The thing actually comes in, it would take us about four hours to build each one into a backyard. So, it's a very new, very different, innovative concept. I've gone through several meetings with the city of Lincoln on this, and we're quite a ways down the road, and thrilled that other places in the community are looking at this as well. So, I apologize that I didn't make it to the beginning of this meeting. I just hope to be able to gain the right contacts, so that I can have some discussion and see if I can help you guys along and contribute the innovation that my company's been working on. So, anxious to chat when we're done here.
Yeah, great.
Quick question for you, please, if I could?
Go ahead.
The ones you're manufacturing, do they have holding tanks in them like a typical RV?
We've actually got that as an option. We're dealing with a lot of different municipalities. I would prefer not to do a holding tank if I were living in it, but there is an option of putting in a holding tank on it. So, personally, I would prefer hooking it up to sewer. But if we find that we're in a jurisdiction where that becomes difficult to do, then yes, we could do a holding tank. City of Lincoln looked at our plan for solar on the top and holding tanks and said, "No, that's not what we want. We'd rather just, you know, have you make this something that plugs into electrical, plugs into sewer." And their permits are going to wind up being about twelve thousand dollars per unit, plus we've got to put it on a slab, which raises my price by about fifteen thousand dollars, but not the end of the world, because then it's also appraised onto the property value. So, it just kind of depends what the city wants. We've built this in a way where it can be very flexible, but, you know, if cities are looking at it, saying, "We need these certain things to be approved," we certainly don't want to be scofflaws, that's no way to build a business. So, kind of more depends on you guys than us. Yes?
I just have a question about, have you done any market research, just to understand what the demand might be for these?
Yeah, it's, it's actually been phenomenal, the market research we've done. What we've done is there's, there's meetings like this going all over Northern California right now, and I, you know, I haven't even been able to see how deep the market actually goes. Every time we call someone, I mean, it's just, the phone starts ringing off the hook. We haven't, we've built some in Tahiti and the Philippines and Indonesia right now. We haven't delivered to the US yet, and it's a slightly different build than we've done in those countries. But, you know, everyone who we've spoken to in the US, it's been just huge demand. I don't know how to quantify it just yet, and I do believe it's a different type of demand here in Placer County, where I live, versus the Bay Area, where I think it's a different, here it fills a need, more of a human need. Out there, it's more of a lucrative need for those who are already renting homes, which are forty-four percent of the homes in the Bay Area. So, the market does change from place to place. It's, your guess is as good as mine as to how big and how deep the market is, but I think it's absolutely significant.
We're obviously at the early part of this process, so I would, again, encourage you to stay engaged in it, and any of you that are interested in this, I would suggest you give Emily your contact information, and she can continue to keep you updated as she goes through the process.
Okay, terrific. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'm Heather Harmon. I'm a real estate broker for Placer County, so I thought I could shed a little light on the market. According to the National Association of Realtors, the millennial demographic is projected to be sixty percent of our buying power. It's, it's growing fifteen to twenty percent every single year for the last three years. So, we're already at about fifty-seven percent of the current market being millennial-based demographic. They are very interested in a different lifestyle, which Genevieve was sharing with you. So, the idea that they want to park their, their tiny home in an RV park isn't really what they're looking for. They're looking for a lifestyle. They're, they're maybe not even necessarily looking for affordable, they're just looking for a smart way to live and be connected. So, you're, you're going to see that as part of the process of which you hear from people about this. The other thing that I get from a lot of my, a lot of my clients is that they are looking for a way to have a home base that they own, because their rents are so hard to stomach right now. The cost to buy, the cost to rent, is not possible for a lot of people who have a good income, have good credit, have a good history, and they, they want something that's their own. They're not, they're not twenty years old and wanting to live in a roommate situation. So, I have a lot of clients personally who would like to put a tiny home on their property in Placer County and rent it out to people from their church, to people that they know in their community, and it, it would add value to their property, and it would also give them an opportunity to help the rental situation, the housing affordability, to people who, who need it. So, I, I really encourage all of you to continue this conversation, listen to the community. It serves a really big need. I would also ask you to consider cluster housing with tiny homes. I think there's a tremendous need for that, and I think it would serve a huge population. So, it would definitely require some planning changes, some zoning changes, but I, I think that there's a tremendous need for that, and it would really serve a lot of people. In terms of putting it on as an accessory dwelling or a second dwelling, I would ask you to look at an opportunity to allow that to be tied into an existing septic system, instead of requiring it to have a new septic, and that would sort of alleviate some of the, the costs that it's going to take to put this on a, on a property that already has a septic system. So, if there's a way to write the code, so that that could be... So, if there's a way to write the code so that that could be a part of the process, I think that would be really helpful. Also, I don't know why it wasn't discussed that compostable toilets or compostable plumbing is something that's very possible with a tiny home. Nevada County's already written code recently to allow certain language around the compostable toilet system or the compostable plumbing. So, perhaps that's something that can be looked at by Placer County and see if that's something that could be implemented also. And I also would be very interested in how they'd be taxed. So, that would be a question I'll put through when I send my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Garabedian.
Hi. Mike Garabedian for Placer Group CR Club. We, CR Club has been very supportive and enthusiastic about the housing initiatives by both public and private entities in the county. In this case, we discussed it a bit at our monthly executive committee last night, discussed this, this wheeled tiny houses and, and are looking at it. So, I have some issues to put on the table to hear from staff about in, when it's time. A key issue is, of course, to us, locating any new structure in very high-fire-hazard severe areas or moderately high even, but as high as well. So, the question of location becomes important that way. But just more specifically to the ordinance, a question, would these be subject to defensible space requirements? And the idea of having wheels on them, of course, creates that as a fire hazard, but even related to that is a space. Any space under a structure, whether it accumulates or grows fingers not, is a, adds terrifically, tremendously to the, to the fire hat issue, fire hazard issue, and so, I guess the need for skirts or something. So, there are other, other fire hazard-related issues. A key question is whether this is permitted or not. And if it is, an accessory develop, ADU under the state law, it's presumably ministerial, and the staff report's a little confusing, 'cause it refers to both, secondary and ADU. And I think in Sacramento, in the law, they only talk ADU now. So, that's, that's an important clarification. So, then, the key question about this whole area under ADUs is that I believe that municipalities and counties have the ability, under zoning, to identify where they might not go or where they might be permitted or not. And so, there really needs some real clarification and understanding of what kind of, how, how, in connection with this or otherwise, we might learn that how they are, may be or may not be permitted in places, a rather, a rather key question. So, thank you for providing this opportunity, and we will keep participating.
Thank you for your very focused comments, Mr. Garabedian.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And appreciate if you'll follow up in writing with those as well. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, all of you, for your input. I'll close that to the public and bring it back to the commission. This is more of an informational item, just to bring us up to date. Is there anything else that we'd like to pass on to Emily, based on what we've been hearing?
I think there's a lot of potential for this. And to, to, to help with some of the, the serious housing issues we have, I, I would like to see it, an attempt to make it an affordable housing issue. We have a huge gap to fill there, that, that we see fees aren't adequately covering and what have you. And, and, and while there is a certain intrigue to making one very unique and nice and plush and all that, I see more of this leaning towards filling the, the gap in, in affordable housing. And I, I think with some of the conditions that we're seeing be placed on it, it will miss that mark. And, and I would like to see some effort put to where it could be kept affordable.
Those are good comments. Thank you, Jeff. Any others? Okay. Well, then, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody, for attending, your input. Thank you, Commissioner.